So I am going to call the New Mexico Water Quality Control Commission to order and welcome you all here. Pam, may we please proceed with the roll call?
May I unmute myself? Of course. Yes. Good morning. I wanted just to confer that we have a couple of commissioners that are going to be absent this morning. Toby Velazquez, and I believe Commissioner Raider will be late. Is that what you you got the same memo as I did?
I did for Commissioner Raider. I wasn't aware. I don't think of Toby Velazquez, but so noted.
Okay, thank you. And I will proceed with the roll call. Commissioner Brankard, are you with us this morning?
I am.
Good morning. Commissioner Candelaria? Commissioner Dominguez?
Present.
Commissioner McWilliams?
I'm present.
Thank you. Commissioner Modi? Commissioner Patton?
Yes, I'm here.
And Vice Chair Cypher?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Timmons?
I'm here.
Commissioner V Hill?
Here.
Chair Stringer?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of our agenda today. Do I have any requested revisions or motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval. Commissioner Brankard?
I second the motion, Commissioner Dominguez.
Thank you both. Shall we have a roll call vote to approve the agenda?
Yes, Commissioner Brankard, your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
I don't believe Commissioner Modi has joined us. Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner V Hill?
Yes.
Chair Stringer?
Yes.
The motion to approve the agenda passes.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson.
Yes, Commissioner Thompson.
We have a a person that is with the commission. She is, I believe she's representing the Office of the State Engineer, and that is Dr. Katie Zemlik. And perhaps, I don't know what her status is, but I think she should at least be acknowledged.
Okay. All right. Well, it looks like we've got a light crowd, and I wouldn't mind ending a little early, too. I've got 10 o'clock, and I'm not sure where it is yet, so I've got to build in some.
I think someone needs to mute.
I'll look for that person.
Okay. It's V Hill.
Ah.
Looks like it's quiet now.
Okay.
So Ms. Jones, do we have a letter appointing, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name that you said, Commissioner Thompson, to the commission as of yet?
He said Katie Zemlik, and I don't have a letter yet, but I do see Ms. Zemlik on the on the screen.
Yes, I'm here. I think there was an email sent earlier this morning, and they're preparing the letter. So I just thought I'd join if that's okay with everybody today.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome. Okay. Let's see. Going back to the agenda, we're ready to approve the minutes from the June 14th commission meeting. Any comments, revisions, or motion for approval?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
I would make a motion that the minutes be approved as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Brankard?
Thank you both again. Shall we have a roll call vote to approve the minutes?
Yes. Commissioner Brankard, your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I was absent, so I will abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Timmons?
I'll do the same. I was also absent. I'll abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Velazquez is absent. Commissioner V Hill? Commissioner V Hill, how do you vote on the approval of the minutes?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. That's okay. Chair Stringer?
Yes.
Thank you. And I I guess I'm not going to call Commissioner Zemlik, but noted that she's she's now on the the roster of members. Is that is that protocol? Is that what I need to do?
I would think that since we didn't have the record, the letter going into this meeting, that that would be the most appropriate. If Council Sanchez has any differing opinion, you're certainly, please weigh in. But we do welcome you to the commission, and I think starting next meeting, you'll be able to be a voting member. Council Sanchez, is that an appropriate path forward?
Madam Chair, yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you, and again, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is an opportunity for the public comment. So do we have any members of the public who share, who would like to provide any comments? Pam, did you have anyone sign up? Okay.
Yeah, no one no one signed up to to make general public comment this morning.
Okay. Well, if anyone is out there and we're not able to hear you. Okay, we've we do have a chat comment. So we have Mr. Arguelo would like to potentially make a comment. Okay, so he's got a question on when in the process he can comment. This is the opportunity to provide public comments on the agenda. We're going into other matters that don't have opportunities for public comments, so Mr. Arguelo, I think now is your time to provide the comment unless Pam or Council Sanchez, we can revise the agenda to allow that later, I think is the only option that we would have on the table.
Madam Chair, let's go ahead. Go ahead and have the individual offer his public comment now, please.
Okay, it looks like he's here to support the Rio Hondo. And so, you know, public comment on that actual matter has already closed, but I think it any public comments can be taken during this part of the agenda. So Mr. Arguelo, if you'd like to go ahead and provide your comments?
Sure. Hello. Good morning. Buenos dias de Dios a todos, a todas. My apologies for getting on late. I just wanted to initially, I guess I could provide a general support to you all, and thank you all for the work you're doing to help us protect not just our rivers, not just the riparian areas or the watersheds, but also to ensure the protection of, you know, our families and communities. Whether we've been here for generations, or whether it's new people learning to explore and appreciate nature in a very respectful way. And with that, I'll just say that for us, not just in our village of Aldez, you know, this watershed and this river represents a whole lot more people all the way down, all the way down through Albuquerque, through Mexico. And really, a protection and a status like you all are addressing can really support generational effort, not just for a livelihood, right? Because subsistence farming is kind of going away. But really, a livelihood of being able to access and maintain clean water, uncontaminated water, right? Its relationship to the underground water table, not just recreational uses such as rafting or fishing, which is being mostly promoted nowadays. But the larger issue of is the future going to have issues such as fracking? Other type of extractive resources be reintroduced, which could happen at any time, right? And so I just want to really support you in the work you're doing, in the support you have for our communities, and for the longevity of what your work is trying to do to help us assure that as people who have historically lived in harmony with these resources, we can continue to do so, and we can find voice and protection through the work you all are doing. So I'll leave that for my personal comment, and just thank you all for the time and expertise you all provide to this. Because a lot of us are so busy just trying to survive, we can't become experts in this like you all are. So we really rely on you for that, and I appreciate what you do share and how you do help us.
Thank you. I apologize if I mispronounced your name, but thank you for your public comment. Council Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Arguelo, as we say in northern New Mexico, to respond to your greeting, Dios se lo dé felices, muchas gracias.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none and seeing none in the chat, we shall move on to the next agenda item, which is the matter of the petition for permit review of discharge permit renewal and modification for DP 873. And I will turn the floor over to the hearing officer, Mr. Chicalian. You're muted, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners and members of the public. I asked for this time to bring you up to speed on this matter, the canon petition review. But before I do, I would like to also mention that today you will be deliberating on two ONRWs, one of which I submitted a report in, one of which I did not. In the Pecos matter, you have my report. You also have a few extras in the report, which I was not asked to include, but I included them because I thought they may be helpful to the commission and to Council Sanchez in drafting a statement of reasons. There is also an attachment to the report. So I hope that they are useful to the commission, and I am available if you need to reach me. Ms. Jones can get me within a minute or two, if I can be of any help to you. As for the Rio Grande matter, which I was not asked for a report, Ms. Jones, being the administrator, did compile a public comment report from our smart comment portal, and you have that if you find that to be helpful. So now I'd like to discuss the canon permit review. I am going to be citing to the rule 20.1.3 NMEC, which is the adjudicatory procedures for the Water Quality Control Commission. And I begin my comment with the with the motion to remand that was filed and was before the commission when you appointed me as hearing officer. There was no ruling. I checked the minutes. There was no ruling on the motion to remand, so I asked the parties if they would agree to have me rule on that motion for the commission. And I denied the motion to remand because it was not timely followed filed. You can see that in 20.1.3.16 subsection A3. A request for remand must be filed simultaneously with the permit review petition. So that disposed of the motion to remand. The next issue to discuss with the commission is oral argument. You will see that oral argument is contemplated by the rule in the same subsection 16B2. The order, the parties may jointly or singly submit to the hearing officer prior to the issuance of a scheduling order requests regarding the date and location of the review and other procedural matters. And the sentence above that, the order shall provide information on whether the commission will hear oral argument. Now, it's not up to me to decide whether the commission allows oral argument or not, so I wanted to present this to the commission possibly for a vote, if Council Sanchez thinks that's appropriate. But in the final sentence in B2, it says the hearing officer may consult with the commission on procedural matters at the commission meeting. I had a scheduling conference with the parties, and the request for oral argument is not opposed by NMED. And I think it would be helpful in this case to the commission to make a decision. Now, oral argument is not a time for evidence to be admitted. All the evidence is contained in the administrative record and its supplement, and I'll discuss the supplement in a moment. So at this point, I am recommending to the commission that it allow oral argument on the August 9 meeting. Chair Stringer?
Thank you, Mr. Chicalian. You know, I think the more information we have, the better to make an informed decision, but I certainly open it up for discussion among the commission for any discussion on the matter or a motion to approve the request for oral arguments.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Cypher?
Yes, Commissioner Commissioner Cypher.
I too agree with the philosophy of more information. It certainly can't hurt. I mean, it's it's not going to be super time consuming, and the potential value is 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 good. So I would, with that, unless it, my fellow commissioners feel differently, I would like to make a motion that we entertain the oral argument as explained by our hearing examiner.
Thank you. Commissioner Dominguez, I see your camera turned on. Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, let me make a comment, and then we can I will either second that or or slightly revise it. So my question, I agree, I I think additional insight is helpful for the commission to to frame things. I will agree with with the hearing officer that that everything will be in the record there. With those things said, is there value to setting some time parameters for the oral arguments? And I I point that out as a a question, but more of a suggestion that we put some parameters on it just so that it doesn't turn into a complete repeat of everything that's already been submitted in writing. So I do not have a suggestion on what the timeframe is. Maybe our hearing officer might have a suggestion on that, but I think it's worth consideration and build that into the motion.
Madam Chair?
Thank you for the comment, Commissioner Dominguez. Yes, Commissioner Chicalian, do you have a response to that comment?
I do. As the hearing officer, I have discussed with the parties time limits on the oral argument to avoid what Commissioner Dominguez just alluded to. And I was going to take that up as a more of a procedural matter after the commission voted whether or not to allow oral argument, the details of which I'll get to in a bit.
Okay, Council Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree that the hearing officer is most familiar with the case and is best suited to determine the time allotted to each party for oral argument, and also to be able to decide whether he will allow the individual parties to reserve time for rebuttal within the total allotted time. So I think the hearing officer is best situated to to make those determinations.
Okay.
Madam Chair, with that said, I would second the motion that's currently on the table.
Thank you. Shall we have a roll call vote for the motion to allow oral arguments with the understanding that the hearing officer will set some limitations in that regard?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Brankard, how do you vote?
How would vote? Yes, I'd also say, and maybe this is just too obvious, that the briefs of the parties are already in the record and available for review by the commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Candelaria, your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner V Hill?
Yes.
Chair Stringer?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Chicalian, did you have additional?
I do. I do. So to to follow up on Commissioner Dominguez's request for a time limit, my my time limit is 45 minutes, and each party can reserve time for rebuttal. I do agree with Commissioner Brankard that the arguments are laid out in the petition, answer, and reply. But I believe that there are there are technicalities which would greatly benefit from a verbal from an oral argument standpoint. I don't think that the the pleadings are I mean, unless you delve into it as I have, I believe it's a little convoluted, and I believe that it will take 45 minutes for each party to make their argument. So that's my decision unless there is a commissioner who feels that 45 minutes is either woefully too long or woefully too little.
I don't see any hands raised or comments, so I will take that to mean your proposed time limit is reasonable.
Okay, thank you. I also discussed with the parties who is going to pay for the court reporter, because if you look in subsection F 2, the hearing clerk shall record audio, record any oral argument. Any party may, at their own expense, have it transcribed verbatim. The Air Force is going to pay for the verbatim transcript. So that has been worked out in advance as well. I next want to discuss the motion that I ruled on a few weeks ago, which supplemented the administrative record. As a beginning point, I will say that administrative records are presumed to be complete. There is a lot of case law out there, both state, federal, including our rule, our statutes. They all lead to the idea that the administrative record that was before the Bureau that made the decision to issue this permit are deemed to be complete. However, our statute, our statute allows for a party to supplement or complete the record, the administrative record, under certain circumstances. And without boring you, I decided that in this case, those conditions were met in certain circumstances. So there was a motion to supplement with six documents. Two of those documents were not opposed by counsel for the Bureau. So those two came in by stipulation. Of the remaining four documents, I allowed three of those four documents in because those documents were not available during the comment period that closed in May. Those documents of last year, those documents became available after that period. And so there was no reasonable opportunity to provide them to the Bureau during the decision-making process. However, the Bureau did refer to those documents in its decision-making process in the administrative record. So for those reasons, those three documents are also allowed in. So of the six, five were allowed in, one was not. You will find those documents on a separate five link in the docketed matters page. It will also be in the packets, of course, that are distributed to the commission before the August 9 oral argument. But I wanted to make you aware that the administrative record was supplemented by my decision. Okay, and finally, what I wanted to discuss with the commission is the post-oral argument decisional process, because the rule leaves a lot lot open. Now, as you know, the the commission, if the magic words are in the agenda, has the ability to deliberate and decide on the matter at the end of the oral argument. However, the commission may find it helpful to have a hearing officer's report. And this is all in F3 decision, and is not a lot here. It says the commission shall consider and weigh only the evidence contained in the record before the department, which was supplemented, as you know, and the recommended decision of the hearing officer, if any, and shall not be bound by the factual findings and legal conclusions of the department. And I think also of the hearing officer. The commission shall sustain, modify, or reverse the action of the department based on the review of the evidence, the arguments of the parties, and the recommendations of the hearing officer. The commission shall set forth in the final order the reasons for the actions. So as you can see, and that's it, there is no timeline if the commission wants a hearing officer report. I discussed with the parties this possibility, and that I would discuss this with the commission during today's meeting. Normally, what happens, and we can use this as a as a starting off point, normally, the verbatim transcript is the official record if there is a verbatim transcript, and there will be in this case, paid for by the Air Force. Normally, there's a notice of transcript. Normally, there's a notice of transcript filing once that transcript comes into the Office of Public Facilitation. That generally begins a period for the parties to propose findings of fact and conclusions of law to the hearing officer. Generally, that timeframe is approximately thirty days in most of the rules that I have come across. It can be lengthened or shortened depending on if the commission has a particular necessity for speed and Counsel Sanchez may may weigh in on this. It doesn't say it doesn't talk about a timeline here in F three. And I can't find a timeline elsewhere in this rule that says how quickly the commission must make a decision, if not immediately. So Counsel Sanchez, I leave that to your interpretation. However, normally the parties have thirty days to review the transcript and the and the evidence and to propose conclusions and findings to the hearing officer. I then have a certain amount of time to compile that into a report. There are times when the parties have a period of objection or exception. Not necessarily in every rule, but in many they do. And then then the report is finally, in its final format, filed with the commission and that generally begins a decision-making period of time, which again is not outlined in this rule. So I was thinking if if the commission does want a hearing officer report, usually something like this would take a day by the court reporter. Because it's, you know, oral argument of up to, you know, maybe two hours in total. And I don't know whether or not that would include questions from commissioners or not. I mean, the rule doesn't talk about whether the commission members could question the parties as to their oral arguments, but I leave that to Counsel Sanchez as well. The rule really leaves a lot open for interpretation. So I was thinking, once the notice of transcript is filed, the parties would have thirty days. I don't believe I would need thirty days to compile a report. Maybe my report would take two weeks. Possibly give the parties a few days to make comments or, you know, point out exceptions if they if they so if they so choose. And then a few days for me to revise my report if I feel it's necessary and file the final version with the commission for deliberation at a future meeting. So there's my thoughts on the post-hearing, I won't call it a hearing because we're not taking any evidence, but the post-argument schedule. Chair Stringer?
Thank you, Mr. Chakalian. I will open up the floor to see if Counsel Sanchez has any additional comments or guidance for the commissioners or if any of the commissioners have a discussion point or questions for this issue. Counsel Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What Hearing Officer Kaylin has proposed as a matter works for me, the timelines are entirely acceptable to me. I would remind the commission that there is docketed a waiver of the time limitations that we normally have to look at or face in these sorts of situations. So we're fine with that. Just to clarify, I assume that Hearing Officer Kaylin's reference to the parties, the thirty-eight period for the parties would be for post. Well, it's post-closing of the record. Well, no, that's not it either because I agree with Mr. Chakalian, the the language is awkward, that the parties would have thirty days following to file any any additional submissions. Overall, I'm fine with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Sanchez. So essentially, we've got a proposal to follow typical hearing procedures and you're seeking input on that proposal. So Commissioner Dominguez, I see your camera on. Do you have a comment?
Just a few to maybe help frame a few things from a historical perspective. I think Hearing Officer Chakalian did an excellent job of pointing out the the things that are within this portion of the rule and the many things that are not in this portion of the rule. Permit reviews are typically few and far between from this commission's historical perspective. There's only been a handful of them done over the many years. And with that said, they've been handled from one extreme to the other, meaning some permit reviews actually only encompass the written briefs. The commission reviewed those, went straight into deliberations, made a decision. Other ones, there were oral arguments. The commission went into deliberations, made a decision. And we've had some, as what's being discussed here, that then went into post-hearing briefs followed by a hearing officer's report. So I only throw that out not to confuse everybody, but to provide some some broad perspective that we do not have what would be considered a standard pattern. And I think it's been pretty much based on possibly the complexity of the permit that was before the department and the commission as to how the commission handled. Given the fact that this one may be a little more complex than some that the commission has had before them. I think some of what the hearing officer had suggested as far as a path forward makes sense. But I'm also bringing these points up to help possibly some of the newer commissioners be prepared in August of what they need to do ahead of time in August. And then whether they will have additional time to fully wrap their head around everything. So I'm I don't know if that helped or hindered things for the commission, but I wanted to try to frame parts of it so that the commission can utilize that in making a decision on moving forward. And would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. I think your historical perspective is always enlightening and helpful for us to navigate some of these procedural issues that are explicitly spelled out in our regulations. Do I have any further questions or discussion from the commissioners? So we don't have a motion on the table yet to concur with the proposal to proceed with a post-hearing schedule that is more typical, sorry, post-oral argument schedule that is aligned with our typical hearing schedule. May I seek a motion for that? Actually, I will go ahead and propose a motion to follow the proposed the proposal to follow that typical schedule that follows a hearing and provides the hearing officer report and the opportunities for responses, essentially. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, before I make a second on that, can I throw in a question there just to help the hearing officer out? And that would be along the lines of the the vagueness of whether the commission wants a decision by the hearing officer or just a hearing officer report. Would that be, Mr. Chakalian, would that be a valid question that would help you move forward?
I it would, of course, be helpful. I anticipated what would happen is once I outlined some of these issues to the commission and I know that Chair Stringer made a motion here, I thought that what would most likely happen is that after oral argument, the commission would decide how complex the issue seemed to them at that time and whether they felt a report a report and or a recommended decision would be helpful. And then I could outline the post-hearing timetable for the commission with Counsel Sanchez's input. But of course, he did mention the waiver, so I'm glad he did that. But yes, of course, when I am tasked, if I am tasked with a hearing report duty, then yes, I would I would love to know whether or not the commission would find it helpful for a recommended decision as well. Thank you.
Then, Madam Chair, given that, and I'm I'm fine with counting on that decision until we've actually gone through the briefs and heard oral arguments. So if that's fine, I would just go ahead and second your motion that she made.
Okay. Thank you. So noted. Commissioner Brinkard, before I proceed with a vote, did you have a comment?
Given this last little discussion, would it be better if we postponed this until after the oral argument? So we know exactly what we want to get. I mean, I think that, you know, the idea of having the idea of having somebody going through this to assist the commission is a good one. Whether it's the hearing officer, whether it's the commission's counsel, whatever. But it seems to be in glancing through the arguments that these are primarily legal arguments. The Air Force is saying a lot of things are unlawful here. So it's not like a typical hearing officer's report where the hearing officer is going through the facts, laying out the facts for the commission. This is somebody helping us with legal arguments here. So I don't know. I don't know if it's better to do it now or to wait till after the oral argument to do this.
Okay, so as I understand it, you're saying wait to even decide on the post-hearing schedule until after we've heard the oral arguments and make that whole decision that we had a motion on the table for at that time?
I guess that would be my preference because I think we'll have a much better sense after the oral arguments, just what it is we have to wade through here to make a decision.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'll offer up not an opposing view, but a different perspective, and that would be from the standpoint that going into a hearing the parties involved, I think would typically like to have an idea of what the path forward is so that they know not just what's occurring at the hearing, but what the steps after the hearing is going to be. Not to speak for either of the parties, but if I was in their shoes, I I think I would kind of like to know what's going to happen after the hearing so that they can be prepared accordingly. So with that suggestion, it still kind of falls in line with with what the motion on the table is. But I'm willing to hear comments from from Commissioner Brinkard or other commissioners.
Commissioner Brinkard, did you want to provide any response?
I mean, I think when we when we hear from the parties next month, I think we're done with the parties and we're now in the deliberation phase and we need to figure out how best to be assisted in that deliberation. So that's simply my thoughts at that point.
So we do still have a, the motion is on the table and seconded at this point. So we can take a vote on that. Before we do so, may I ask each of the parties to just provide any input they have on that procedural question, if there's any concerns over the proposal that's on the table, if that's appropriate? Just a brief response from both Mr. Atencio and Ms. Davis.
Well, I would just share that the hearing officer had a meeting with, in med's counsel, Mr. Atencio and myself, prior to this meeting, where he went over his proposal for the post-hearing schedule, and I had no objections to that. So I have no objections to that procedure.
Very well positioned.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, looks like we get that one muted. Mr. Atencio, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Chair Stringer. Members of the commission likewise. This is not necessarily new and the department didn't have any objections. And would defer to however whatever information, as long as it's within the confines of as noted earlier about the the record being what it is already. But the information, arguments, or proposals as the hearing officer laid out that the commission needs to make its decision.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Atencio. Last call for discussion before we take a vote. Oh, we do have one. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, could you just please clarify the motion? I've gotten a little bit confused.
Certainly. So right now, we have a motion that has been seconded to plan to follow the typical post-hearing procedures and apply those to this oral argument process, anticipating the normal hearing. Trying to think if it includes the hearing officer report, but certainly the actually, I'll leave it to Mr. Chakalian to outline the specific steps that we're going to follow for this motion, just so I get them. So we make sure the commission understands them correctly.
Commissioner Thompson and Madam Chair, I had recommended that once the notice of transcript is filed, which would take about a day in a case like this, maybe two, that the parties would have thirty days to present their proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law and to Commissioner Brinkard's statement earlier that this is basically a legal argument. Yes, I agree, that is a legal argument. However, it's based on facts and it's a very long administrative record. I think it's five thousand pages. And that's not including the additional information that was allowed in by myself. So so it would have proposed findings of fact, conclusions of law. I would then digest those, refer to the record, make my ultimate findings of fact, conclusions of law, and possibly a recommended decision if the commission finds that would be helpful. Any of my information can be disregarded. The commission is ultimately the decision maker, but that's what we were looking at. My report would come about two weeks after the thirty-day period for the parties. Possibly give them a couple of days to comment. Sometimes that comment is helpful if I make a mistake and and I do. So that sometimes is helpful. I can then revise my report if I feel it's necessary with a few more days there. So ultimately, we're looking at about a two-month period from once the notice of transcript has been filed to the filing of the final report. I hope that's helpful, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. Thank you.
So our proposal, as currently on the table, our motion that has been seconded is to follow those post-hearing procedures as outlined by Mr. Chukalean, retaining the decision on whether or not the report will include a decision until the oral arguments have been heard. And with that, I will ask Pam to take a roll call vote on that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Branca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Condalaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams? Circle back. Commissioner Patton? Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons? Commissioner Timmons?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Let me go back and see if Commissioner McWilliams has a vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair Stringer?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chukalean, does that include all of the items for discussion?
It does. And if, and if you have no further use for me, then may I be excused?
I, yes, thank you. You, oh, sorry, we have a hand up from Ms. Davis. So before I excuse you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, ma'am. And, Mr. Hearing Officer, if this is not the appropriate form to ask this question and you'd rather do it offline, just let me know. But I would just want to ask a few clarifying questions about the format for the oral argument. So I understand that it's 45 minutes and I understand that we need to only cite to the administrative record. No witnesses will be called, no evidence will be entered. But my question, I guess, is, it's just 45 minutes of straight argument, no opening statements, no closing statements. Is that the, the anticipated format?
That is. It's, it's your, it's your decision if you want to begin your oral argument with an opening statement and conclude it with a closing statement and reserve some time along the way to rebut. That's your choice to make. You can use demonstrative exhibits. Those are not, those are not prohibited by the rule. And if you feel like demonstrative exhibits, exhibits help your, help the commission understand your argument as long as they're based on the record as supplemented by my order of last month, then by all means, both parties can take advantage of that.
Thank you, sir. And then one final question is, should we be expecting questions from the commission throughout our presentation or at the end of the presentation?
Mr. Sanchez, Counsel Sanchez, what do you think?
Okay, I'm analogizing to, to having argued several cases before the Court of Appeals in Supreme Court. I think it's the commission's prerogative to interrupt counsel at their leisure and ask questions as they deem appropriate.
I would agree. I would agree. And, and, and that won't add time. And just like any oral argument before any body such as Counsel Sanchez just mentioned, you know, if the commission does interrupt you, you're still on your 45 minutes of time.
Understood. Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chukalean, you may be excused with the understanding that you have offered to be available for counsel should we need it through the deliberation process for the other two matters. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We are moving on to item number six on the agenda, which is the Commission deliberations on the matter of the petition to designate surface waters of the Upper Pecos watershed as outstanding national resource waters. So as you all are aware, the matter was heard in front of the commission on April 12, where the case was presented with an opportunity for public comment and public participation. The commissioners, along with the parties, had the opportunity to question the witnesses. The transcripts and the video of the hearing were made available to our docketed matters webpage, along with the full administrative. Okay, thank you. Along with the full administrative record. And with that, I will open the floor for the commission to deliberate on this matter. Do we have any comments, questions, discussion from our commissioners? This could be a, a quick deliberation, it seems. So while we're waiting for people to formulate their, oh, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, I'm, I'm about the only one that's not bashful. I just wanted to kind of bring up a, a couple of points on this, this particular one and actually overlap into the, the next one also. But when we look back over time, we've had numerous stream segments designated in prior years. And they're predominantly within the boundaries of federal land. Both of the current positions include segments that are adjacent to or through private property. So this raises some, some points about what might be the potential impact to private property rights down the road. I think it's important that we recognize that there's a language in 20.6.4.8 A3D and D that talks to pre-existing land use and the Aseca operation and maintenance. And I, I think the, the language that's, that's in the NMAC is useful because it, it provides some, some guidance to the commission and the department. However, I think there's, there's still some ambiguity regarding land use that changes or is not currently pre-existing. And I think that came to light a little bit during the hearing testimony and questioning, where when I posed some of those questions about differing uses of the land, varied responses depending on who was testifying at the moment of what the impact might be to private property. So I think it's just important that we recognize that there's the potential for unintended consequences to private property rights that, that may not have necessarily been taken into account as we move through these hearings, even with the, the, the language that's currently in 20.6.4.8. So I think it's just an important point for the, the commission to, to understand and to point out a, a little bit of a difference from many of the, the prior ONRWs that the commission has approved. So with that, I'll, I'll stop there, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. I think those are very important points to highlight as we make this decision. I have a couple of comments, but I wanted to seek additional input, comments from other commissioners. Okay. So I, I want to just commend the parties for their efforts in putting together these proposals. You know, I think in the context of what Commissioner Dominguez just presented, acknowledging that it preserves the existing uses of those water bodies and protects them from future uses to ensure no degradation of the water quality occurs moving into the future. I, I think it's really important that we're protecting our aquatic resources and preserving those traditions and, you know, creating a good future for following generations, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Okay. I see Commissioner Branca came up, so I want to check to make sure he's got a comment before I proceed any further. Commissioner Branca?
Thank you. I didn't want to cut in if anybody else had comments. But I guess I would sort of take off on what Commissioner Dominguez said and emphasize the importance of the decisions that we're making today. It looks like if you read our rules, that it's kind of a checklist, that we have all these things that need to be in a petition. And then we've had these elements that are criteria that you have to meet. So it looks like in some ways that the decision of the commission is just sort of making sure all the boxes are checked. And while I do, and I will state that I think the boxes have been checked in this application, I think it's something bigger than that. I mean, after all, what we're talking about here is just, look at the words, outstanding national resource waters. It's a pretty serious designation. And if you go to the section of our rules prior to this, which talks about anti-degradation, you see the impact of what it is to classify something as, we call an ONRW, or I think what EPA calls a tier-three water, that it's, it's a pretty significant step. Now, we've done this before. Others, many other states have done this. We're not doing something that unusual here. I will agree with Commissioner Dominguez that we're taking a little bit of a step out here in looking at areas outside of wilderness areas to see what can be protected that also meet these criteria. And so I tend to look at the language that comes out of the EPA and the Clean Water Act. EPA's language says, where high-quality waters constitute an outstanding national resource, such as waters of national and state parks and wildlife refuges and waters of exceptional recreational ecological significance, that water quality shall be maintained and protected. So that's what we're talking about here. And I guess my conclusion is that while we have to say, has the petition met all the elements in Section 20.6.4.9A? I think that's true. Does the water meet the criteria that are listed in Section 20.6.9. B? I think that's true and they met many different criteria. I think the bigger thing is in 9B, it says, would the designation be beneficial to the state of New Mexico? And given the location of this area, given its importance to the people of the area, to the people of the state, that it is essentially the waters of a state park that we're talking about here. I don't think there's any question that this designation would be beneficial to the state of New Mexico. So recognizing the importance, as Commissioner Dominguez points out, of this step we're taking here today, I do believe that the nominated waters do and should qualify as an outstanding natural, national, not natural, national resource water under the state's rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Branca. Additional comments? Okay, I would like to just note also that there was extensive opportunities for the public to comment and there was an overwhelming expression of support for this with noting just minimal opposition to the proposal in this matter. So I, I again, just applaud the efforts of the parties to do the best they could to make sure these waters are protected for now and for the future and have the highest levels of protection. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to nominate, to declare, I guess, these, the water bodies listed in the matter as an outstanding national resource water. Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Branca. Appreciate your eloquent words. And with that, Ms. Jones, may we have a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to confirm who made the motion and who seconded. It got garbled for me.
So I made the motion and Commissioner Branca seconded it.
Thank you. And with that, Commissioner Branca, how do you vote on the motion?
I vote yes, on the assumption that the motion basically includes the changes to the regulation. This is a rulemaking, so we're making changes to a rule.
Good point.
Commissioner Condalaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Patton? Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
And Chair Stringer?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to a very similar matter, we will now deliberate on the petition to nominate segments of the Rio Grande, Rio Hondo, Lake Fork, East Fork of the Haymaz River, San Antonio Creek and Redondo Creek as outstanding national resource waters. And I open the floor for deliberations from the commission. I, I echo my sentiments in the previous matter that I appreciate the party's efforts to everything they've done to protect these waters. And we'll just leave it at that. I don't want to repeat myself, but I open the floor for discussion. Yeah, and I was going to say, Commissioner Dominguez, I imagine, has similar comments.
And both of these petitions had, had overlapping similarities, so I won't repeat what I covered the first time. But I, I think Commissioner Branca hit on some really good points during his prior comments that, you know, both of these petitions check all the boxes. But we are kind of heading down a, a new path with both of these. As it relates to, to potential impacts to to property rights or so forth. And so I wanted to also, from that standpoint, our our rules allow for, you know, temporary degradation for emergency situations, or it does allow for, on a case-by-case basis, short-term degradations for certain activities. And that's, that's covered under 20.6.4.8. A for A. And then it goes through a whole series of things that if there's going to be some short-term degradation, what a party might have to do in coming before the commission to get approval for, um, different restoration or maintenance activities that that might have to occur around that ONRW. And from a historical perspective, there has never been a party come before the commission to get approval for a short-term degradation of an ONRW. But as Commissioner Brinkard had pointed out, we've typically been dealing with areas in wilderness or Forest Service properties, so that's never really been an issue. But that could be an issue moving forward. And that leads me into one of the other points here of, um, regarding segments that have point source discharges. Or segments leading into the petition segment that have point source discharges. That doesn't preclude an ONRW designation. It can still check all the boxes. With that said, I think we hear the term most pristine waters of the state frequently used when people are talking about ONRWs. These are the most pristine waters in New Mexico. So with that said, there's times within the most recent petition hearing that sometimes I scratch my head a little bit of and ask myself, is downstream from a point source discharge consistent with the term most pristine waters? If if we have an ONRW that's downstream from a discharge from a wastewater treatment plant, even if it's meeting standards, does that equate to the term that's, that's typically thrown out when talking about ONRWs? And with that said, regarding those point source discharges, if even if they are currently meeting standards, with a designation as an ONRW, are we potentially setting up a point source discharger or failure in the future? So if a wastewater treatment plant becomes antiquated or becomes over capacity, are we going to place that discharger in a precarious situation sometime in the forthcoming future? And those are just things that go through my mind of looking years ahead. And that is by no means to discount the fact of currently protecting those water bodies by the designation. But it's something that I think we, as, as this commission may be faced with additional petitions down the road, it's something that we need to take into consideration and keep in mind. Not just for this one, but for future designations, because it's a little bit of a unique situation that separates it from prior ONRW designation. So I just wanted to bring those up, um, particularly for this uh, petition as, as one of the proposed water bodies meanders through a ski area that's currently going through additional developments. And has a wastewater discharge plant there, what impact does that have for, um, for those type of entities, um, moving down the road? So I just want to bring that to the commission's attention. And as I said, not to discount the overall objective of protecting water quality through these segments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Commissioner Cypher?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. I really appreciate Commissioner Dominguez and Brinkard's, um, comments. Uh, while while we acknowledge that this is a nuance with dealing with private property, uh, as, as to what has been done in the past. It's good to acknowledge it. It's good to understand it, but at the same time, during this prescribed process that we went through, I don't know that we have anything that really protects these property rights, uh, or concerns that we may have missed, except for the public process itself, which these properties were all notified, and we really didn't hear anything from them. And I would say that the number one responsibility of what those private property lighted right effects may be, uh, that burden is borne by those individuals, and we didn't hear from them. If we would like for future to have some other considerations uh, that we should examine, I would be all for that. But I don't know, while I sympathize greatly with, which has been said, um, I, I would like to see that we put into action for future review, needed legislative changes or whatever we might do, because the way I see it now, we did do the checkboxes. We did advertise to the public process. And I don't know at this stage more what we could have reasonably or should have reasonably done. Although I share the concerns of these two commissioners, I would think that if there is indeed a concern, we ought to, um, voice it by way of proposed legislative changes at a later date. I don't think that's a discussion for today, but I'm just suggesting that if we have some concerns and want to change the process to better review those concerns for private property, that that would be in order. Otherwise, we've checked all the boxes. We've provided the public advertisement, and that's kind of where we're at. So I just wanted to kind of add, uh, uh, the kind of flip side view of that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Additional comments? Commissioner Brinkard, did you have one?
Yes, thank you. Um, again, I believe that these petitions do meet both the actual requirements of our rules in terms of what the petition should contain, whether they meet the criteria. And I think they also, you know, meet the spirit of what I discussed in the last deliberation, uh, protecting waters that are of national importance. Here we have the Vias Caldera Reserve, we have the Rio Grande Norte National Monument. Um, I would, however, um, think that there are two unique situations here, one of which Commissioner Dominguez has brought up, where we have an existing discharger of these, um, the Rio Hondo unit. We also have a unique situation with the Rio Grande. From what I under- from looking at all of what we have approved as ONRWs in the past and a few minutes ago, these are almost all headwater streams. Where, so therefore, in terms of managing degradation, um, you're managing it from the headwaters, or in some situations, the headwaters of the tributaries are within other ONRWs, wilderness areas. Um, so we really, the environment department really would have, you know, a clear path in handling any degradation to these streams. With the Rio Grande, we have a stream that has has, I think, several hundred miles, uh, prior to it becoming an ONRW, um, which is not protected in the same way. Um, and actually, it's under the jurisdiction of another state. So I just think the environment department will have an interesting challenge uh, in trying to maintain, uh, the water quality in the Rio Grande, uh, under what we're, we're being proposed here. I don't, I don't know whether we're, you know, you're going to end up intervening in the city of Alamosa wastewater discharge permits, um, you know, to deal with this. So just, just a, a note there, but I do believe that these petitions do meet both, uh, the letter of the law, meaning both all the requirements and criteria, and I do think they meet the spirit, uh, of the law, the protections. And so I would support these nominations.
Thank you, Commissioner Brinkard.
Madam?
This is Commissioner Timmons. Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment, please. The, uh, I, I, I think because I missed the, um, meeting where this was heard, I will abstain from this vote, but I just wanted to make a comment that, uh, I think that I, I would support this and the, um, idea of potentially using these designations to help the NMED and other collaborators to, uh, increase potential funding and, um, opportunities basically to monitor and track the water qualities of these bodies so that we can continue to protect them going forward. So I think this designation maybe gives us a little bit more leverage for advocating for those sorts of programs and funding opportunities. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Timmons.
Will they let me in?
Oh. Do we have another, uh, Commissioner comment? Not sure who that was. Okay, he- hearing none, um, I would just like to again, thank Commissioner Dominguez and Brinkard and others for their comments. You know, I think it does this particular case where we do have the point source discharge in play. Um, it underscores the connections that we have to our natural resources and how we must be protective of our streams. I think protecting streams where really there aren't a lot of activities that could potentially impact the waters, an easy, an easier thing to do. And so I think this next step that we're taking to be protective in areas that might be a little more vulnerable to those activities is, is very important in the proactive protection of these waters and making sure that they're preserved. Um, so I'm, I'm definitely, I understand the concerns that are presented or that were presented. Um, and I kind of look forward to seeing how this plays out, but I think this is an extremely important step. Um, it's an expression of the pride that we have for our water resources here in New Mexico, um, and how we're willing to go to these measures to ensure the protections. Um, so with that, I will see if we have a, a motion or any more comments. I will go ahead and make a motion to adopt the listed water bodies as outstanding national resource waters with, uh, the regulation revisions that are required in order to do that.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Cypher?
This is Commissioner Cypher. I, I would second your motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Cypher. Uh, Pam, shall we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Commissioner Brinkard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Condalaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Chair Stringer?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you all. I appreciate all of the parties being present that I see out in the audience. Uh, moving on to our next agenda item. Uh, next meeting and expected upcoming matters. Uh, so our August meeting, I don't have the exact date that it's scheduled for, but it's second Tuesday of the month. Um, as of right now, we've got one matter planned for that agenda item. Uh, it's a request for a hearing. From El Paso Water, I believe, is the party. Is that correct, Pam?
That's correct. We, we have one also, another, um, another one that I received as well from, it's a review of, um, permit 1132.
Oh, that's right. So those are two upcoming matters. Um, and then I also, I see Council Sanchez has his hand up, so Council Sanchez, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just by way of information, I'm very happy to say that I will be taking a extended trip to Alaska starting the end of July and going through August, the 10th. Uh, that may be a problem in that the second Tuesday in August is August the 9th. Uh, so just want you to know, uh, that that would be a, a problem, at least for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you for letting us know that you will not be present at the August 9th meeting. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention here is that we understand that we'll be, uh, replacing a commissioner's, Commissioner Timmons, you mentioned that um, you will have a replacement appointed in the upcoming months. So just wanted to give everyone a heads up that there'll be that change. And then, of course, noting that we will also have the new member, I don't see her name, of, uh, Ms. Zimlich will be, uh, a commissioner at the next meeting. So a few changes in the makeup of the commission upcoming in the future. Any other comments on upcoming matters for the August meeting?
Madam Chair, not so much the August meeting, but, um, for looking down the road for, for you or Pam, uh, what is September looking like? Just for planning purposes.
So I don't have any items listed for the September matter, but if we plan for a hearing on if we approve the request for a hearing or oral arguments, I'm not sure which, I haven't read the order, it just came in, um, there- there could potentially be a hearing during the September meeting.
Okay.
Although, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And then just as a kind of a follow up procedural suggestion for deliberations down the road. Commissioner Timmons jogged my memory when she abstained from a vote from not being at the, the actual hearing. And it brings up a good point that if we have commissioners that are absent for a hearing, but do participate in the deliberations and a final vote, it's typically necessary to put on the record that that commissioner has reviewed the administrative record and is familiar with everything in there in order to participate in the deliberations. So that's just something to keep in mind for future deliberations so that we don't wind up with a potential appealable item if a party chose to take that approach. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. That's a good point. I think the rule states that if a commissioner is absent, that we must provide the transcripts to them for them to participate. And I think acknowledging that on the record that they have reviewed the, the record and the transcripts is important. So thank you for, for pointing that out. Counsel Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If, if the commission has no other business, I just wanted to very quickly note for those commissioners that have been on the commission for quite a while, just to let them know that the Court of Appeals upheld the commission's decision in the issuance of the Copper Flat Mine Permit. I think Mr. Dominguez was, or rather Commissioner Dominguez was involved in that. And we have the petitioners, basically Turner Rents Properties and GRIP, who have filed a petition for writ of search or ri, which is now pending. It'll be interesting to see what our Supreme Court does with, with that petition. Just, just an aside, thank you, Madam Chair.
No, thank you for that update, Counsel Sanchez.
Yes, thank you, Counsel Sanchez, for that update. That's, as always, some of these things take so long some of us even forget about what's still pending before appeals or the state Supreme Court. So thank you for that update.
Yes, with that, I believe we've covered all of the upcoming matters that we're aware of. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting for this month. Thank you all for your participation. I look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.